Hello. So we had last minute conclusion from the chat. What we saw here. And I don't.
We have four.
Yeah, we have. We'll just have that all. Useful vote up. We're ready now. Don't want to create an elevate. Uh, I hereby call to order the January fifteenth meeting of the Scarborough zoning board of appeals. Um. I hereby call to order the January fifteenth meeting of Scarborough Board of Appeals. This is a public proceeding unless we vote to specifically go into executive session. The public has the right to hear everything that's being said and to view all the exhibits that are presented. We work from a prepared agenda which has been posted, so we will go through that once we do a couple of initial items. First, if we could all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so getting into said agenda, um, if we could call the roll.
Peter Freylinger?
Here.
Christine Snow?
Here.
David Ward?
Here.
And Kyle Lunin?
Here.
And we are elevating Kyle to a full voting member. Um, he's the alternate, but he'll be a full voting member for this evening.
Noted.
Thank you, sir. Um, then if I, uh, we, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting so long ago? Any comments? Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, David. Thank Christine. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The minutes are approved. Uh, we have two actions, again, this is from prior, um, from, uh, prior business. Um, we have the limited reduction of yard size approval twenty-seven sixty-three. Did everyone have a chance to read the findings of fact? Do they reflect our comments? Any question about, could I have a motion to approve the final findings?
So moved.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Second from Christine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could I see a show of hands for approval? That is approved unanimously. Thank you. And in, again, the final findings of fact for limited reduction of yard size appeal twenty-seven sixty-four at ten miles drive. Um, did everyone have a chance to read the final findings and are there any comments? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, a second. Christine, thank you for seconding. We're moving faster, Mr. Green, so you have, you're at least terrific. Um, could I see a show of hands for approval of twenty-seven sixty-four, please? Thank you, that's a unanimous approval. And now we will go into tonight's new business. Um, the first is appeal twenty-seven sixty-five, a special exception appeal, home occupation by Edward Alden. Mr. Alden, thank you. Twenty-four Dresser Road, um, if you could take the stand, introduce yourself and take us through your request for appeal.
Okay, is this on?
Yep.
Should be, yes. Hey, uh, so my name is Edward Alden. I live at, uh, twenty-four Dresser Road in Scarborough. Um, I live in a rural farm district, so automotive work is not permitted there. I'm looking to just, I wanted to do automotive inspections and look at people's cars. I already, I work for Public Works, I'm the fleet manager, so I handle, I know a lot about vehicles. I have a lot of people come to me after hours to, or they buy a used car, they want to buy one, I'll look at it, say yes, no, this is what you should do. Uh, I just give advice and I just want to be able to do state inspections as well at my house. While I'm looking, it's, I don't want to work on cars, I've done that enough in my life, I'm past that point. But I do like helping people and I like, a lot of times it's classic cars, I like looking at that stuff and I like helping people.
Got it, and just to be clear, is this in prohibited use in the district or it's a special exception to use, right?
It's a home occupation, so all home occupations are special exceptions.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, got it, okay. Um, yeah, just, just to be clear, it's, it, it is a special, your home occupation is a special exception? It's not that you can't do it, it's just you have to come to this board to get the approval, so. Um, okay, are there any upfront questions for the, oh, yes, Mr. Ward?
Yes, Mr. Alden, I do have, uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, you're performing, you will be performing a service that a lot of dealerships and, um, auto service places do for free.
Yep.
I'd like to know, how, how does this work for you then? What if you deny somebody's inspection, okay, what do you do?
So in that case, because I have my inspection license, I've been doing them for years at dealerships and then in the, my current role with the town. I can, if a car comes in and it fails, I can deny it, I do the same thing that any other state inspection station would do. My idea is more, I can do the stickers, but I want to help. A lot of, a lot of people don't trust the other garages and especially whereas I don't want to do the work, they know I'm not trying to make money off them.
Okay, so that's, that's the type of customer you're going after, somebody who doesn't trust the dealerships and service companies?
They might not trust it or they want a second opinion when they're going to buy, uh, buy a used vehicle from a dealer.
All right, so that's really a side thing you'd be performing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, which isn't really part of this at all, you know, just your personal opinion.
Yes.
Like you're doing now anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right, good, I just wanted to understand the business model a little bit because I was a little confused, you know, how this would work for you.
It's nothing to make, not to make a lot of money out, it's just something.
What is it, eighteen dollars per vehicle?
Eighteen dollars per vehicle, yeah, so you, you don't make money at it.
No. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. So do you have a, a shop that you would refer people to if they had something that was major that was needed remedy or?
Yeah, I, I have a few, I know people around the shops that I've worked with in the past and I could recommend them to go to those. Um, I could also, if they wanted, if it's something they wanted to do on their own, I could guide them through what they need to do.
Okay, so you're not going to perform any of that onsite, it's just, but you have the ability, you, you have the ability and wherewithal to refer them to the folks who can do it at a license.
Exactly, a license, to get it repaired, yes, and if they want to come back or if they know somebody that can do that and they still need an inspection sticker afterwards, they can come back to me at that point.
Okay, got it. Any other?
Just to follow up on that, since you're doing the initial, the inspection, you know, typically when, you know, when you do that, you scrape the old one off, is that correct?
A lot of times you do that or, um, it varies.
Okay, so in, in which case they would pretty much have to come back to you for the reinspection once the problem is solved.
They, they could come back to me or, I mean, since I'm not making any money at it or, I mean, I'll charge them to look at their vehicle to help them out, but, uh, they could get it done at the other garage they go to.
They could, okay.
They could, but they, some people, there are a few garages around, smaller garages in people's houses where there's no inspection station, but there are people that do that work on the side.
I see, okay, I, so I understand a little bit better how all this works, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Gotcha, okay, uh, is there any public comment on this? There is seeing none. Um, we will go through and then we will review the standards for the special exception. Um, we, first of all, I thank you for the detailed, um, uh, response to these. We have varying levels of folks who come back to us, but you've come back at a high level of detail and we appreciate that. So, um, now you have the unfortunate need to read into the record, um, most of what you've already written now, but if we will go through one by one here and.
Peter, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Um, how, how many clients do you think are going to come through for inspections?
My guess, I wouldn't think I'd be doing any more than maybe fifty a year, fifty inspection stickers. Um, I don't, I don't know what it'd be for people looking at, you know, getting advice, probably around the same. Not, not much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just to follow up on that, are these by appointment only?
No, I will have, um, hours posted, which I legally have to do for a state inspection station and it'd be in the evening hours from, because I have a regular job. Um, for, I need to be open certain amount of hours, which would be like two hours in the evening and then by appointment only, other than that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I should ask, were there any public comments that were entered in by phone call or email? No, got it, okay. Terrific, then we will go through the, uh, the, the standards for the special exception. Um, and again, you don't need to do this verbatim, but give us enough of the detail for each response that we can have that entered into the, 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 uh, video record here.
Okay.
So we'll start with, um, standard A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reasons of sewage disposal, emissions into the air, water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Um, I'm proposing to use my already existing garage as a motor vehicle inspection station only. I don't, no automotive repair, so there'll be no oil, there's no antifreeze, none of the, none of the hazardous stuff. There's no, there'll be no discharge of any, the only emissions would be vehicles driving into my driveway.
Got it, great. B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity.
Um, there's, it's going to be such a small, minute amount of vehicles, the amount of, having an inspection station will not create any more vehicle traffic on Dresser Road or for pedestrians or anybody else. The amount of vehicles is going to be so small.
And as I look here, Dresser's kind of across.
It's a cut through.
Yeah, it's a cut through, exactly.
Yeah, we get a lot of cut through traffic already.
Yeah, exactly, and, and I guess with that in mind, is there adequate, um, turnaround space or is there adequate ingress and egress space for cars to come in, in and out?
Oh, yeah, plenty of room because I almost, I'm almost directly across from Lad Drive and so it is actually even a traffic, a street light out there. And, yeah, that's, my driveway, it's big enough, I had, I've driven ladder trucks, it's, there's plenty of room for anything to go up my driveway.
And I ask that just for the benefit of it, we, we, the, the RF district, especially on that side of the turnpike, is getting more and more comments about through traffic and cut through traffic and the dangers that that can propose, so.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you, um, I don't. Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right, so we have in our notes that, uh, these will be done by appointment, but they will not be done by appointment. Can you tell me a rough idea of the evening hours?
Let's see, I get out of work at three, so probably four till six, I, I would say that I'm open, but my plan is, which is I have to have a certain amount of hours according to the state police for this ability, but my plan is to make ninety-nine percent of it appointment only.
Oh, you are doing it by appointment.
I'm, my plan is to do ninety-nine percent of it by appointment, but I do have to legally have hours according to state police.
So you are basically doing it by appointment, although it's available at other times.
It is available, I'll be at my house.
I see.
Because I'll be at the house anyway.
You're a homebody.
Yes.
And so the state police essentially make you have, if I showed up at four fifteen on a given afternoon and said inspect by car, the state police say in order to keep your inspection certificate, you have to inspect by car.
Yes.
Understood, got it, thank you for the clear.
Can I jump in with a quick question as well?
Sure.
Just so I'm, I'm clear, by an inspection station, you don't mean just that you will do state eighteen dollar inspections? You mean that and you will also take a look at people's cars and say, here are the problems with them?
Exactly, yes, there's that, which would be the upcharge, if they just want an inspection, I'll do that, but if they want, there'll be like a hourly rate or a half hour rate if they want me to evaluate a vehicle before they buy it, they might be getting with an inspection sticker.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We're learning a lot about the inspection process here, so, but any, any other questions here?
So.
You're, you're right, it is.
So up until about fifteen years ago, um, the state police would just issue stations without talking to the towns. And there ended up being a lot of inspection stations around and a lot of towns are very upset about this, so then it's, that's when I found out, I missed it by about four years of just getting that done. Uh, but so then I'm like, you know, we'll go through it this way.
We appreciate you following the process today.
That's.
Um, okay, so we'll continue with this. Item C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, uh, again, having an inspection station on my property, it will not change how I currently utilize my garage aside from a minimal amount of additional vehicles that could show up for business. Um, it will not create any greater risk for any of the town services.
The proposed D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies.
Correct, because once again, there will be no automotive fluids.
Right. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
So my house and my garage are built back virtually towards the middle of a six acre parcel of land, well back off the road during the summertime, you cannot even see my house um, with the, the foliage and trees. Um, the, the closest neighbor is kind of behind my garage out through there, uh, one of my friends, well, a neighbor, he's a friend, so, um, it's, I can't remember what else I was going to say.
Well, will you have any signage on the street? I, I see this inspector sign everywhere.
I do have to legally have that, uh, yellow sign, it's about this big, but it's going to be on the side of the garage.
Okay, so that doesn't have to be on the street, that just needs to be?
It just needs to be posted on the building.
Got it.
So I was going to keep it up on the side of the garage.
Okay, got it. Any other questions, that was mine. Um, if located in a shoreline zone, this is not located in shoreline zone, is it? Um, Mr., thank you very much. Um, you have the sufficient right title or interest in the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use?
Yes.
And are you the owner subject to a mortgage or?
Mortgage.
Does the mortgage have any restrictions on commercial activity or?
No, none.
Okay. The applicant, H, the applicant has a technical and financial ability to meet the standards of the section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section.
Uh, I have the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of the section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the BOA, uh, towards subsection five of this.
Sounds good. And, uh, I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation.
Yes, again, I, having an inspection station will not create any more, any more noise in the neighborhood than the current traffic that goes by. Um, I currently use my garage as, I'm a hobby mechanic on the side too, because I have my old cars and stuff, but it, it's just an extension of that.
Do you work with nineteen sixty-five MGBs?
Not really. I do know somebody that might.
That's unfortunate, Mr. Alden.
Um, god damn, I'm willing to learn.
Okay, we, we, there are quite a lot of performance standards, as one can imagine, for, for this. Rather than going through these individually, I'd like to ask the, um, if the, 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 um, members have had a chance to read this, I have, and I don't see anything exceptional or that requires additional questions. It's in the, um, it's in the application and it's, uh, section nine, performance standards for home occupations. Gotcha.
The applicant's move. The applicant's also provided a floor plan of the garage to demonstrate that he's under the one thousand square foot accessory building.
So what I'd like to do instead of going through that tediously, um, if we have no questions or comments, accept them as submitted by the applicant. Thank you. Okay, that's terrific. Um, then, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Alden. I, um, disappointed to hear your lack of services that you offer in certain regards, but, um, uh, with that, we will, and again, with no public comment, we will close this section and we will open this up to discussion among the board members. Pretty straightforward, that's kind of what I thought. Okay, so we'll go this, through this one by one through the standards. Um, Christine, start us off on, uh, A, the proposed use will not create unsanity, et cetera, et cetera?
Will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions. The applicant has testified that the inspection station is within his existing property and existing garage and there will be no changes to the property and.
Great.
Sounds good.
Any other comments or thoughts? Hearing none, do we find that the applicant has met this criteria? We have a unanimous view on that, yes. Number, or, sorry, letter B, David?
Letter B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity. If, if you're doing approximately fifty a year, that's only one week on the average, again.
Yeah.
And yes, anybody could drive off during that small window you have, but I think that's going to be negligible, other than that it's a very manageable situation where it's basically one vehicle at a time. And if you're only doing one a week, then that's hardly any kind of burden as far as additional traffic.
Any other thoughts? Hearing none, do we agree that the applicant has met this requirement? We have a unanimous view, thank you. Uh, Kyle, C?
Standard C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. Um, I think the board can make a finding that the proposed use will not create any public safety problems nor require a substantially greater degree in, um, municipal fire or police protection because of the low, um, just because of the nature of the proposed use and because of the anticipated, um, low amount of, of traffic to the site.
Volume, yeah, agreed. Um, any other comments from seeing none, do we agree that the applicant has met the requirement for this? Second, agreed. Uh, for D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies. The applicant, I think, has indicated that there's not going to be a disposal of, um, automotive, uh, liquids or discharge products as part of what he's offering for inspection. Um, and therefore there should be no issue here other than the normal issue of having a car parked on your, on your, um, property for a half hour, so. Um, any other comments on this one? Seeing none, do we agree that the applicant has met this for standard? Great. Christine, number E, or letter E?
E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development. He has a screened garage and property and, uh, nothing is being changed, it'll be exactly as it has been in the neighborhood. The inspections are done by appointment and of very low intensity and should have very little impact.
Agreed. Any other comments on this one? Seeing none, do we agree that the applicant has met the requirements? We do, uh, it's unanimous. Um, I'm going to go through F very quickly, do we agree that the, um, property is not in a shoreline zone? If we can see a show of hands, that's unanimous. And similarly, um, we agree that the owner has, that the applicant has shown sufficient right title and interest in the property by basis of his materials provided. We see four hands, thank you very much. Um, uh, David, the H?
Yes, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of the section, uh, to comply with, uh, any conditions imposed by the board pursuant in section five of this section. Uh, the applicant has demonstrated, uh, much technical ability to perform this kind of function best. Thank you. I will repeat this.
I thought you needed a new microphone, but apparently no, it's just not on.
For the benefit of the audience out there. The applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with the conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to section five of this section. The applicant has demonstrated the technical ability due to his vast experience in doing this kind of work and has certainly can, uh, shown the financial ability, uh, as far as being the owner of this property and having the ability to, uh, to do this, uh, you know, up to standard.
Any other comments from the board? Uh, seeing none, do we agree that the applicant has met this requirement? That is unanimous, and Kyle, take us away.
Standard I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation. I think the board can make a finding that given the limited hours of operation and the minimal or likely zero generation of noise from the proposed use that, um, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood.
Any other discussion notes from the board? Seeing none, do we agree that the applicant has met the requirements under the standard? We do. And again, I will take a general read, do we agree that the performance standards are required under the RF special exception requirements have been met? That would be unanimous as well, thank you very much. Um, I will now entertain a motion to approve or deny the, uh, appeal.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Presumably to approve?
To approve.
To approve.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sure. Um, then we'll, we'll call the roll.
Peter Freylinger?
I.
Kyle Lunin?
Yes.
David Ward?
Yes.
And Christine Snow?
Yes.
The, uh, appeal is granted. Thank you again, Mr. Alden, for a very complete application, we love having these, well, well done, um, and it makes our job easier and good luck with your business. Side business, exactly, yeah, yeah, hustle.
We don't want to lose them at the town level either, so.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't want him to be too successful.
Correct, exactly, thank you very much. Phenomenal, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Uh, ask him. Okay, that is, um, uh, we are now moving on to appeal number twenty-seven sixty-six, that of Daniel Mays and Frith Farm, sixty-one Ash Swamp Road. Um, the applicant wishes, uh, to establish, um, an agricultural employee housing, so, um, if you saw the drill, if you could, um, take the stage and we'll go through general questions first and then we'll go through, um, the, the readings of the requirements under the special exception.
Um, sure, yeah, so Daniel Mays, uh, nice to be here. Um, yeah, so I run a farm on Ash Swamp Road, sixty-one Ash Swamp, uh, Frith Farm, and we employ anywhere from eight to ten people currently, um, each season, uh, seasonally. And housing is becoming hard, a bigger and bigger deal for them to find. Um, there's just not affordable housing for someone with farm wages, um, to find in the vicinity, so people end up commuting a long distance that, you know, makes it hard for us to hire. So this, this would really be, um, yeah, enable us to attract, uh, a wider range of people from farther field and, and provide them the housing, make that transition much easier. So it really makes the. So it really makes the, the farm, uh, more attractive to potential employees. Yeah, just going through, it's a, there's a little bit of complication because we do have a agricultural conservation easement on the property. So even though it's in housing for farm employees, that doesn't qualify, you know, as an ag use building tech, uh, according to Maine Farmland Trust. So hence the, going over the property line into the adjacent parcel, which I also own. So this, you know, if the board approves this, we would, uh, I would convey, um, just under four acres of that back parcel, uh, the, you know, southern part of, uh, Three Cardinal Lane, over to the farm. That conveyance would be unencumbered by the easement, so therefore, we could build, um, the housing on it. And to just add even more complexity, um, the soils would, you know, aren't as well drained there, so, um, the neighbor has agreed to convey the back, the northern sort of 8,000 square feet of her lot for us to site the leach field, because that hits the, um, the Scarborough's code for drainage.
Is this technically temporary agricultural housing then, or is this just housing?
It's, uh, yeah, it's agricultural house, seasonal agricultural.
It's still seasonal, it still is under this, th- th- this has come up recently in another, uh, another town matter. And, but this is still seasonal, so you're limited in terms of number of months. It's, is it seven months or eight months, or?
I believe it said eight months.
Yeah, uh, so you're still limited to the eight months, and it's considered seasonal agricultural housing. It's not general workforce housing, affordable housing, et cetera.
My understanding is it's, you know, for employees, uh, seasonal employees of Frith Farm.
Okay, got it. Thank you for the clarification. Excuse me, um, keep going, sorry.
Sure, um, so, yeah, the farm road as, as drawn, um, is existing, you know, it's, it's a woods road going in there. So it would just, it would be the, the housing, the septic, you know, we'd, we'd pump it up to the leach field, uh, sited on the north part of, uh, 63 Ash Swamp Road currently. I think that's the, the broad strokes overview, um, yeah.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mays, uh, first of all, I, I just want to commend you on what you're doing as providing, as far as providing seasonal housing for your, uh, seasonal employees. This is something that's very much needed, as you've pointed out, and in fact, the, uh, the need for workforce housing in general, and, you know, certainly seasonal hous- uh, housing, is acute, not only in Maine, but nationwide. So this, uh, this is something that I personally am very pleased to see. And, uh, it appears, it appears that the, the way you're, you're laying this out will be in compliance with, um, you know, all the necessary requirements, even though, you know, it means that you have to use, uh, you have to buy additional eight acres, as you pointed out, from the neighbor, in order to, you know, position this in the right place and, you know, have the septic system and so forth. And then, uh, you have, you already own an additional property nearby too, which is part of this, so, you know, all this is necessary in order to accomplish it the right way. So, you know, I just simply want to point out upfront that what you're proposing makes a lot of sense, and, um, glad to see it.
Thank you very much, yeah, 8,000 square feet, um, of the nor- of the neighbors, not, not eight acres, but yes, thank you very much, yeah, yeah.
Can I jump in with a question?
Of course, yeah.
So, wh- tell us about the nature of the housing, is this basically, this is just going to be like a single family home where workers will have their own room, or share a room, and sort of live communally otherwise?
Yeah, the way we've laid it out, I'm working with, um, Leslie Benson, who's an architect here in Scarborough, um, and her husband is hopefully going to be the builder, Robbie Alden, uh, happens to be the brother of Eddie.
Oh, so Eddie, we're like, yeah, okay, got it.
Yes, yes. So that, that's who I've been working with, you know, and generating the ideas, and the housing, we have it divided, um, into kind of two separate areas, but then shared common spaces within those. It's nice to have some versatility if, you know, uh, if there's different management areas, you know, to be able to not have managers living with the people they're managing, um, I've, I've found works well. So, yeah, we have kind of, uh, division of space within that housing, but, um, it's five bedrooms within shared communal spaces. And it is, you know, it's, it's insulated, it's comfortable, um, it's, yeah, it, it's, uh, different than we've been able to offer, which is wonderful.
Could I ask, y- y- you mentioned more than five people who are seasonal employees on the firm. Why five as opposed to eight or 12, or?
Good question, yeah, I, I guess, uh, that was sort of the scope of what we, you know, took on for the, for the building. I didn't want to try to pack in too much. Um, we, we do have some housing elsewhere on the farm, like in the old, the old farmhouse, um, so that, that would meet our, our current needs.
Okay, um, I don't ask with respect to the Board of Appeals, but obviously, the town is encouraging workforce housing in different ways, so I just wanted to ask that question. And the other question I had, um, two relates to, the farm road goes into the proposed housing. Is that acceptable for a five unit, um, uh, building? Or is there a secondary fire road that would need to be built to service that?
No, one, one point of access would be fine, as long as.
One point, it is, okay, got it, just wanted to validate that.
And, and, and as part of the permitting process, before we give them final certificate of occupants, we'd make sure that they can get apparatus into that.
Got it, okay, okay, great.
I have another question, that the agreement with, um, Sonia Sandage at 63 Ash Swamp Road to, to sell, you, I guess, to sell the farm, part of that, her parcel, what, what's the nature of that agreement? Is it written or verbal?
Yeah, we've started writing it up, Sonia is a, a good friend, we're, we're, we're close. Um, we, we grow vegetables in her backyard, um, as part of the farm, um, we would give her, you know, vegetables and... So, yeah, she's very helpful and supportive of the farm, she's agreed to sell that portion. We've started writing up a purchase and sale agreement, I didn't want to actually put it through until hearing the decision from the, the board here.
Is the, are the terms of that agreement reasonably definite, like a price?
Yes, yes, uh, yeah, I think it's at $250, because that's the cost of the filing with, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, so she's essentially giving it to us in exchange for us doing her yard work and, um, yeah.
Okay, and, and so is there, is, are the, are the bounds of the property to be transferred? Have that, has that been nailed down as well?
Yes, I've had a real estate lawyer legally, do the legal description of that, um, and that's part of that, uh, purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you.
Actually, related to that, has the conveyance on three, from Three Cardinal Lane, was that surveyed? Or was that, uh, or?
That has not been surveyed yet, um, yeah, I wanted to wait on the cost of all that before hearing, yeah, until I heard your...
Got it, understood, but would that be surveyed?
Yes, I think I would, I would put corner pins and, and get that surveyed.
And would you survey the conveyance from Ash, from 63 Ash Swamp as well as part of that process?
So, speaking with the real estate lawyer, he's, he's, you know, he said he could survey it, but his description, you know, was based on the corner pins that are already there and set distances from them, so he said, you know, I could save that cost.
Got it, okay, fair enough, yeah, okay, great. Other questions of a general literature before we dive in here? Okay, we'll go through the same process again, if you don't mind, um, then, uh, we'll read through the standards for the special exception, um, and, and ask you to summarize your, um, your, your application as part of that. The proposed use, A, number A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Yeah, so we've had, uh, septic design already done, um, by Chris Copie, um, Copie Environmental, you know, to conform to all the codes, and, uh, so that would be the only emissions, other than, you know, basic heating for the building. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Nope, we will move on to B then, uh, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehic- vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity.
Yeah, these would be employees of the farm, so their commute would be by foot on the farm, so they wouldn't be adding any commuter traffic, and when they did need to leave the farm, they would use the existing entrance, um, to the farm, which we already get, you know, much more customer traffic than...
And is there parking for the, uh, for the employees now for, uh, on the existing farm presently?
Yes, yep, we have room for their vehicles.
The proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, our, our employees, I'm, I'm very proud of our employees, they're, they're mature, hardworking folks who, who, you know, we tend to go to bed early and get up early, and, um, yeah, we haven't had any issues with, you know, being a drain on law enforcement or...
And these are existing employees, or the, the, the population is the existing population, so.
Yep.
Got it. The proposed use, uh, D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on water supplies.
Yes, the, the land is pretty flat, um, so it's a low erosion risk, you know, in terms of the construction of the building, but we certainly follow best practices, um, for that. Trying to time it with the weather and, and, you know, using erosion mats or whatever as, as we're digging the foundation. Otherwise, yeah, I don't anticipate any, yeah, it's, it's not near a body of water, um, and it's relatively flat. So, yeah, I, I think those concerns are minimal.
Got it. Um, E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Yeah, the proposed building, yeah, the footprint's about 2,500 square feet, uh, which is certainly, you know, within the range of other buildings in the neighborhood. Yeah, the closest neighboring structure is about 400 feet, I think, away, um, on Google Earth, and that's, you know, less dense than many of the other parcels on Ash Swamp Road, so, um, yeah, it's in line with, with the neighborhood.
Yeah. To your knowledge, it's not located in the shoreline zone?
No, not in a shoreline zone.
The applicant has sufficient right title or interest in the site for the proposed use to be able to be carried out, to carry out the proposed use.
Yeah, so I own, uh, 61 Ash Swamp Road and Three Cardinal Lane. Uh, there is the easement that I spoke about on 61 Ash Swamp Road, but I have a letter of approval from Maine Farmland Trust, um, approving the project.
And finally, uh, the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the board pursuant to subject, section five of this section.
Sorry, that one again?
Uh, H, sorry. Um, the applicant has the technical and financial ability.
Oh, yes, um, yeah, so, working with Leslie Benson and Robbie Alden, they have a lot of experience doing this kind of thing, uh, you know, for the last decade or two in this area. Also, the farm, yeah, is a successful business, we have a low, uh, debt to asset ratio, we can, we can borrow money as needed to, to get this done.
Great, sorry about that. Item I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation.
Yeah, again, our, our employees are, are pretty quiet, you know, go to bed early, get up early. I don't anticipate there being any more noise than there already is, uh, generated on the farm.
Do they perform inspections for 1965 MGs? It's okay, don't worry about it. Okay, that takes us through that, um...
Can I jump in with another question, actually?
You may, of course, yes.
So, um, just looking at the, the letter from Maine Farmland Trust, did you provide them with a copy of the forest management plan that they requested?
We are in the process of getting a forest management plan. I don't remember that being, uh, stipulation for their approval, but...
I see in the second paragraph, they just ask about, "As required under section 6.5 E of the easement, please provide Maine Farmland Trust with a copy of the forest management plan, and any subsequent amendments for review."
Oh, prior to the commencement of any commercial forest management activities, yeah, we don't have any commercial forest management activities. We harvest our own firewood, but we don't sell any.
And I think they encompass within that the creation, use, or maintenance of the Woods Road extension, which I guess is the driveway?
Yes, yes, so that will be, um, or sorry, what?
What's labeled as farm road on the?
Yeah, so that's, uh, access into the woods, uh, for us to, yeah, gather firewood and, and, uh...
So is your reading of the, the Maine Farmland Trust letter that, um, are they conditioning their approval on providing a forest management plan or creation of a forest management plan?
I did not read it that way. Yeah, because we're not going to commence any commercial forest management activities. Oh, but I see, I see, yeah, which includes the construction, okay. Yeah, well, um, we are under, um, we're in the process of getting a forest management plan, so we can meet that. Yeah, I'm, I'm currently selecting a forester we, um, to do that. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, I will, I see no public comment, were there any public comments that came subsequent to the filing of staff comments? Great, um, so no public comment, we will therefore close the comment portion of the appeal. Feel free to have, if we have any further questions, we'll, we'll come back to you. I want to talk a little bit about potential, um, uh, stipulations or requirements. The first is that the conveyance is described, be completed and, and be legally completed as part of the, the, the approval process. And, and, and I, I heard from you, Kyle, I think you were going in a certain direction with that.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm inclined to approve it, but I just want to make sure we have sufficient TRI here.
Yes.
That we don't, you know, get ourselves into trouble, so.
Yep.
Title, what's TRI?
Sorry, title, writer, interest?
Oh, thanks.
So I, you know, I don't know if the best way to do that is to put a, a condition or to give basically the applicant like a certain period of time...
Yeah.
...to complete, Brian, your thoughts would be welcome.
Exactly.
I think that could really be, be conditioned on the actual issuance of the building permit. So in other words, we would, as staff, have to look for those items before we would issue the building permit and the septic system permit, the subsurface wastewater permit. So, so that'll, that would, in other words, I couldn't permit the subsurface wastewater system until it's on his property.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I see.
So, so I think, I think it's almost built in as a condition that we would have to see that conveyance, because he, it has to be part of the farm.
And the conveyance from 63 Ash Swamp.
In order to qualify as employee farming, uh, employee housing.
Yep.
The septic system could, that, that property has to be conveyed before we can permit that system. So I really think it kind of gets covered, and it's totally up to the board, if you're not comfortable with that, that's fine. I think the building permit, though, would be the sort of, would, would encompass what your concerns are...
Okay.
...as far as right title and interest, surveyed, conveyances, deeds, you know, that kind of thing. We would probably want to see that as part of the building permit application package.
Okay.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, same.
And, and then the only question for me is now the forestry management, um, permit, which is, um, you're, the, the applicant's representative is already applying for it. My guess is that's going to be part of being able to build the road as well. So do we want to make that a condition, or are we comfortable that the, 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 both the, 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 the trust documentation and the rest will, will cover us on making sure that's in place?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think from my perspective, if the, if the Maine Farmland Trust has an issue with how, you know, with the plan for the road, they can figure that out, I, I don't think it really goes to any of our, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not concerned that there isn't sufficient title, writer, interest as a result of what they're saying in their letter.
Yep.
That's kind of how I feel about this.
And, and, and as I think about the performance standards and, and what is generally required, this is a use which is encouraged under the RF district. And the performance standards for these types of things for farms are meant to be enabling, they're not meant to be restrictive. So my, my, my belief is that I think we've got more than enough here to, to move forward with approval, um, and without conditions, without conditions that we would send this as EBA.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Okay, then let's go through, um, the findings here for the, uh, special exception standards. We'll start it with Christine, as always, or not as always, but for tonight, for A, if you would join, if you would kick us off.
A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. The applicant is proposing agricultural employee housing. It's going to have a septic system that's, uh, up to code, designed by professionals. There's not going to be any other unsanitary or health concerns related with the housing. And, um, I believe he meets the criteria.
Got it, any other comments? Then I'll take a vote, do we believe the applicant has met the requirements under this standard? We do, unanimously. David, C.
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. I think just the opposite is true, because of the fact that the employees will be housed on-site. They won't be going back and forth daily to go to work and leave to go wherever they're going. And, you know, of course, there will be times where they'll be able to go in and out, but it's not going to be a daily thing, going in and out. It's going to be, let's say, when they're off-duty or whatever. And, you know, I said, this will certainly help traffic rather than create an issue of any kind.
Any other comments or discussion points? Do we feel that the applicant has met the requirements under the standard? By show of hands, we do unanimously. Kyle, C.
Standard C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. I think this criteria, this standard, is satisfied because this basically will function like any other home in this neighborhood, which is rural and already largely residential. And so, I don't think that, I think we can make a finding that this will not meaningfully change the amount of demand on municipal fire or police resources.
Any other further, any other discussion? Do we concur with Kyle's read that this standard has been met by the applicant? We do unanimously. And then moving on to D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on water supplies. I think the applicant has demonstrated that in particular by taking the step of getting the conveyance from his neighbor to ensure a appropriate and compliant leach field site. So, I'd like to, I would propose that we agree that the applicant has met the standard. Is there any further discussion? No, could I see a show of hands? We all agree. Thank you very much. Michelle, or, sorry, we miss Michelle. But Christine, this is on you.
E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development. The proposed use is housing in a residential and farm rural area and will, and meets the criteria.
Any other discussion? Then, do we agree that the applicant has met the requirements of this standard? Can I see a show of hands? We do unanimously. David?
Well, we certainly...
Yeah, exactly, well, this is the Shorelands, right. Just a quick show of hands, we agree that this is down the Shoreland Zone, thank you. Sufficient right title or interest in the site to be able to carry out the proposed use, David.
So, the applicant has sufficient right, I'm not going to repeat where you said the whole thing. The applicant has been running this business for many, many, many years, and certainly has a financial ability and has stated that his debt-to-equity ratio is certainly proper in order to be able to handle any kind of, you know, I think maybe I'm reading into one of the next ones. But yes, he certainly owns the land and has the ability to carry this out financially. So, I think that's, that's all I believe.
The only comment I'll make on this one is that we've observed, we received word from the CEO that as part of getting the building approvals, we will validate that conveyance has taken place as described, and that the conveyance in particular from a third party from sixty-three Ash Swamp Road is being conveyed for in-kind services and in-kind value. So, we don't, I don't think we have to worry about the, any titling issues on that because of improper compensation. So, with that in mind, do we have any other comments on this? And if not, do we agree that the applicant has shown that they comply with the standard unanimously by show of hands? And Kyle, H?
Standard H, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section. I don't believe that the board will impose any conditions, and I think the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards otherwise, as shown by his track record of running the business, and he's already retained experienced and credible builders and engineers.
Any other further comment? Seeing none, do we agree that the applicant has met the standard? That is a unanimous show of hands. And finally, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and operation. Yes, there's no real change in the hours of operation, and certainly this is right in the, in the wheelhouse of what we hope to have in the RF District. So, I would argue that we should approve this one. With any comment, none. Do we agree that the applicant has met the requirements of the standard? We do. Then I think we're ready to move on to a motion to approve or deny.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second from David. Any discussion? Seeing none, could I call the roll, or could Doreen call the roll?
Peter Freylinger?
Aye.
Kyle Moonin?
Yes.
David Boat?
Yes.
And Christine Snow?
Aye.
That is unanimous. The appeal is approved. Thanks very much. Good luck. Wonderful. We really appreciate this type of thing in town, and hopefully this was not too much of an inconvenience for two meetings that we had to cancel. So, thank you very much. Okay. Um, gosh, these are actually fun. Um...
Those are good applications.
They were, exactly. They, gosh, we like getting good applications. So, and actually, thank you very much. Another, we, we, thank you for making our jobs easier.
I like your product.
I'll find a MG mechanic? Okay, the only, we've got a couple of administrative items here. We do need to elect a chair and vice chair. I'm open for being re-elected if you want me.
I nominate you as chair.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, we have Peter Freyler elect as chair. As vice chair?
Who's the current vice chair?
The current vice chair is Christine.
Christine.
She is going to be leading us in the next few months.
Okay, I'd like to invite, excuse me, nominate Kyle Moonin.
I would love to nominate Kyle Moonin.
I don't know that, can I, yeah, I'm not even a full member.
Contingent on becoming a full member.
Yeah, so, so the update is that, and again, this has to be approved by council, but as I viewed the, what's the committee called?
The Appointments.
Appointments Committee's meeting tonight, they voted at that meeting to push forward reappearance of Peter and of David, and you are now going to be a full voting member, moving up from first alternate to take Christine's place. And they appointed a gentleman, I can't remember his name, forgive me, I can't remember his name, but he will become second alternate, and Joe would be first alternate.
Great.
So, that kind of makes us whole. Richard still is on his term, isn't up.
Yep.
I think, and just from my two cents, Richard would also make a great second or or chair, but he's gone three months.
Yeah, and I talked to Richard about it. I think he would be a great chair or vice chair as well, but he has said, given his situation, he doesn't want that, so, and I think that's, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Is she up, is she, is she up for term, or is she?
Her term is, her term, no, her term wasn't expired.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It was just the three of you.
Yeah, she's, she's still got years left.
She's still good.
Yeah, so. So, we have a motion to nominate Kyle, subject to the town council's final approval of his renomination and elevation to full voting status. I would second that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. You just have to give me heads, you have to give me advance notice before you're not going to be at these meetings.
I will do that unless it's norovirus, which unfortunately Michelle had, or unless I think it's at seven-thirty. So, um...
That should not happen again.
Hopefully will not happen again. But with that, could I see a show of hands? We agree that Kyle, subject to final approval, is a full voting member by the town council.
I believe that will happen, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I believe they have another meeting this month.
Yeah, they do.
So, I think...
Yeah, and Karen, I was here earlier for the ordinance committee meeting, and they all said that we were moving forward, so, okay. That's terrific, so that's our administrative item. I have one comment, which is, and I would really encourage people to do this. It's pretty clear the town is, the town council, the ordinance committee, and the long-range planning committee are converging on the idea that the RF District is a mess, and will require some, some re-engineering. I would strongly encourage us to attend what will be a series of, I think, workshops and sessions with the council and with the ordinance committee, so that we're aware of where these are going. I spoke tonight at the ordinance committee to indicate that the use of things like special exception approvals, like we saw tonight, is something that we can do well and that we're practiced at, but we do well when we have well-defined zoning districts that have well-defined purposes that we can understand and have appropriate performance standards and special exception standards that are tailored to that zone, and that what we have right now in the RF Zone, and it's unfortunately a very general set of special exception standards that ultimately you can drive trucks through. I was very pleased with the quality applications tonight, and I think this is not an example of a night where we have effectively no option but to approve poor applicants who met the letter of a very poor standard. But I think we run the risk of that in the future unless we have more clarity on really what the RF District is, or more likely, and what I was proposing, the division of the RF District into multiple districts that have more focused uses attached to them. So, this will be an ongoing effort, I think, for the next few months in terms of ordinance planning and long-range planning. I would encourage us as zoning board members to describe what we think and how we operate as a board, so, to facilitate that process. So, that's it for me. Anything else? Yeah, yeah. Yes. I would...
So, the ordinance committee meets the same night as we do, the second Wednesday of the month normally.
Yep.
And they meet from four, yes.
Yeah, here.
From, from four, ordinance meets from five to six-thirty.
Yep.
And you can check the town calendar on the website. I'm happy to try, either Doreen or I can probably send out a reminder.
Yeah.
Particularly if there's workshops, because those could happen differently.
That's the one that, yeah, if, as the workshops get scheduled out, and part of the motivator on this, too, is there's right now a moratorium on approvals or changes to the Running Hill District, you know, which is, or not, no, it's the light industrial district, sorry, the light industrial district. So, there's a little bit of urgency that will likely put things on the calendar in the next eight weeks. So, if you could help us out on that one for stuff that pops up that might be off-cycle.
Remind me. Between the two of us, we'll try to make sure that happens.
I don't have much experience with workshops in Scarborough, but I know in South Portland, you can't speak out of a workshop.
No, and, and part of the idea is that the workshop that was discussed tonight and...
David, don't forget your mic when you talk. Thank you.
The workshop that was discussed tonight was, would have had the ordinance committee/town council, because it might be the full council, plus the long-range planning committee and staff. I encouraged Karen, and Karen is a former ZBA member, as you know, to consider adding the ZBA to that, to that forum. And then we would be effectively at a workshop table, and we would have the ability to raise our hands and speak.
Okay, that makes sense now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't before.
Yep, yep, so. So, yeah, I would encourage people to think about that. And then, otherwise, yeah, any other comments other than good wishes for Michelle and make sure that, she's got the cruise ship virus, it's a terrible thing, so, yeah, I don't envy her. And two kids with it, too, as well, so.
So, Mr. Chair, I could, just two things. Thanks, thanks to Christine for her service on the board, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Yes, D.
And sorry to see you go, but well-deserved rest, I suppose, from public service.
Is this your last, is this your last meeting?
Yes. I'm ready to leave town.
Yeah. Christine, we will miss you desperately. Thank you so much. Thank you for being my vice chair for the past year. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. But, yeah, you will be missed. So, thank you for that reminder.
And I don't mean to hurry the meeting along, but I know everybody wants to get home. One important change that Doreen and I need to make you aware of, we're going to be doing away with paper packets. We've gone to a system called Board Docs. I'm going to let Doreen explain how you access it.
I agree, just in time.
So, maybe you can explain how they access Board Docs and turn your mic on.
They can access Board Docs through the Town of Scarborough's website.
So, maybe I can even demonstrate.
So, what question, does that mean we should be bringing laptops to the meeting? So, we have that?
You would need to have one, yes.
We will, okay, so that's...
So, when you go to Board Docs, you go under Government.
Government?
Boarding.
Boards and Committees?
Yep, Boards and Committees. And then when you drag down, go to Zoning Board, actually, where it says Boarding Committees on the left.
Okay.
Or go all the way to the bottom, yeah?
Yeah, go to Zoning Board.
We have that advantage, we're always the last one.
Yep. And then, if you drag down to the bottom of that...
Or Zen.
They have View on Board Docs.
View on Board Docs. Do they have to establish a, an account or anything?
Nope, nope.
So, this is what you're gonna see.
Right.
Could any public member do this?
Yep.
Yep.
And when you click on the date of the meeting?
View the agenda.
You can view the agenda here.
And then when you drag down on the left side, all the documents that you have in your packet.
So, all the appeal documents, you'll see over here, you see this little document thing, and there you have all of the information that would be in your packet.
I will say, if you use a Mac on this one, because I've been using my computer, if you, if you click on something and nothing happens, do a control click and ask to open it a new window, and then it always works. So, something about Safari has a little bit of a glitch here, but I've been able to get every doc just by doing that little trick of, of control and click.
And I would also offer, I don't know that it necessarily is mandatory that you bring a computer or a laptop or anything with you, because I have all of this that's going to be on the screens anyway. If you've had the opportunity to review it at home and you're comfortable with the information, if at any point during the meeting you want to see a certain document, I can go to it. So, it's up to you whether you feel you want to have that in front of you now.
Okay.
Personally, I'll just still print everything, because I find that it's helpful to, I find it disruptive to have a screen when you're trying to, you know, talk.
That's totally, that's totally your, your choice, and you're welcome to do that. We're just trying to get away from the printing costs and the delivery costs and the paper that gets exchanged. And we're actually going to be going, in spring, we're going to have an online permitting system for building permits, no more paper. Obviously, some people will always want to bring paper in, and we have a way to indoctrinate that into the online system. So, we're really trying to streamline and go paperless and save some steps and time and gain some efficiency.
Yeah. A question I have is, and this kind of comes from the MMA training, when we, one of the reasons I always give this back is because if I take notes, the notes are given to the town for, for storage, effectively. What should we be thinking about for that, for note-taking or how we transmit notes to the town for, for record keeping?
That's a great question, and I don't really have a good answer for that. I think I need to consult with the town's attorney and...
Yeah, it's, it's... Well, no, these are the notes that we write.
Your own personal, who's talking?
The marginality that we have.
The best advice is don't make personal notes.
Yeah, exactly, which is what I've always done. I don't, but...
No, you can scratch that, it won't work. You know, this would be a violation of free hold access.
Exactly.
And, you know, we give, so best advice is don't take notes.
Yeah, and, and, and some people, some people need to take notes, just mentally, and I appreciate that, but we would love some protocol on what we need to do to make sure... sure those get captured.
And I'll check on that, again, with legal and, and, Kyle can correct, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think I, I would want to get that advice from the town's attorney.
Sure, no, understood.
And, and, and one suggestion might be, and I'll check with him on this, if you have any notes, there are points that you want to make, and you want to email them to me or Doreen, they could be included in the record that way.
Got it.
And you'd want to just make sure you craft them in a way that you, you don't mind people seeing them. But that, that might be one way around that, and then they would still be available and part of the record. But I, I'll check and see what that suggestion is, because I think more and more towns are going to this, so it can be a new thing to deal with.
MMA, I know, has driven and has, has hammered that message.
It's good that you remember that.
Yeah, exactly, about, about the, the note access. Um, and again, as this group has been gracious and forgiven me for, my numerous administrative errors are usually due to the fact that I never want to write anything in the meeting, and therefore I, I don't, um, and then screw up. So, uh, but, um, thank you, um, thank you, we appreciate that, Doreen, and, and we'll look for...
If you guys have any questions, uh, and we'll make sure Michelle knows about this and, and Joe as well, but...
Yep.
Um, if you guys have any questions about accessing that or how to do it or forget or whatever, just let us know, we'll help you through it, but...
The only question I had, and you mentioned it, Peter, is that on an automatic device, okay, he had to do a go-around, uh, I'm gonna use an iPad Pro, that's just what I'm comfortable using, uh, are there any other types of devices that this won't work on so easily, or we need to have some kind of work?
iPads, a tablet, right?
You, you don't have your mic on again, Dave.
It's becoming a habit, a bad habit. Will this work on any...
What you do is you keep your hand right here all the time.
I see.
I, I think it is a good question, though, um, for those of us who, if, if we could get maybe just, I'm sure there is a one sheet, here are the technical requirements for using Board Docs.
Yeah, I can, we can try to get our hands on that.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great.
It may, it may be a bumpy couple of months while we're transitioned, but I think in